I know, I thought about glasses, because they were glasses. I'm just making this pretty good.
Yeah, I got this card when I started.
For me, it's now.
Is there?
Yeah, yeah.
I think last year we were about.
Did you?
Like, oh, shit. Yeah, yeah, right down.
She wants to.
Yeah.
They are. First, it was very bad.
Was it so?
It was COVID.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. No, that was just very. I was like, because I think I've been fighting for a record that only.
Oh, okay.
And they were like, what about things? Yeah, yeah.
So, the second year, I was like, okay.
They said, come on, come on.
Oh, oh, this, I'm saying, yeah, they did. I heard. Who knows?
Oh, no, because we were. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Like, marriage.
Yeah.
There is. This is twenty years.
Um, I think it's happened since. Yeah.
Oh, we got it.
I couldn't imagine. I'm got me. Yeah.
Madam. Madam Mayor, we can, we can report out if you like.
Could you please call us out of closed session, Madam Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed items one through five, or one through four of the closed session agenda. On item number one, potential litigation, they provided, discussed the matter and provided direction to staff. On item two, negotiations regarding assessors parcel two-two-one-one-one-oh-seventeen-oh-oh, addresses one-thirty-four Myrtle Avenue, San Marcos, California, they discussed and provided direction to staff concerning compensation. On item number three, which is real property negotiations concerning assessors parcel two-two-one-one-one-oh-eighteen-oh-oh, addresses one-four-zero East Barham Drive, they discussed the matter and provided direction to staff concerning compensation issues as well. On item number four, real property negotiations concerning assessors parcel number two-two-one-one-hundred-oh-nine-oh-oh, they discussed the matter and provided direction to staff concerning compensation to be extended in an offer of purchase. And all of these items, the council action was unanimous, and that concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. And then that would end the closed session, and we are going to be opening the meeting, the regular meeting for June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this evening, we have our invocation that is going to be presented by Pastor Morales from North Coast Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and honorable council members and those in attendance this evening, thank you for allowing me to pray for our meeting this evening. Will you bow and join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, first of all, thanking you for our city leaders. Thank you for their willingness to serve our community through their leadership. I pray that you will give them wisdom and discernment as they discuss the various issues before them, and that their motivation in everything they do is for our public good. Also want to thank you for the city staff who diligently work every day for the public good. Father, would you bless our city staff and our city council members for the work that they do? Bless them today and bless their families as they continue to enjoy our beautiful weather here in San Marcos, California, and we're thankful for all that you do, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, could we please have a roll call, Mr. Scully?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Present.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sennella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, and if the council could please join me in the front, that would be great. So, we have two items that we're presenting this evening. The first is a certificate of recognition for Carlos Hernandez Santiago. He is the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation Award winner. If you could come on down, Carlos, if you don't mind. Thank you for coming this evening. Not to put you on the spot or anything, anyway, congratulations. I'm going to read this for you real quick. Got to put my granny glasses on. Okay, well, the San Marcos City Council does hereby present you, Carlos Hernandez Santiago, with an honorable certificate of recognition for being chosen as one of the country's most outstanding high school leaders by the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation. Carlos was selected from over ninety-one thousand applicants, fifteen hundred fifty-seven semifinalists, by the way, I just got a chill, and two hundred fifty regional finalists to commend his awarded, or to commend his academic accomplishments and dedication to his school and community. Coca-Cola has awarded him with a twenty thousand dollar scholarship for college. So, we are super excited to have you here. Did you, did you want to say a few words? I don't want to put you on the spot, but, okay. All right, there you go.
Okay, as Mayor Jones very graciously introduced me, my name is Carlos Hernandez Santiago. I actually was born in Mexico, and me and my family moved here when I was four years old, so I've been living here in San Marcos for the past thirteen, fourteen years, and it's been a great honor to be a part of this community. So, throughout the past years, in high school, I've gotten involved with a lot of different organizations and programs. It first started off with support for myself, just getting into college and things like that, but it sprouted into myself transitioning into a position where I could support other students of similar backgrounds as myself, and right now, that's a lot of the work that I'm doing, and it's a lot of the work that I'll continue doing this summer, just supporting underrepresented students, not just here, but across North County. And I'm excited to go to Bowdoin College in Maine this upcoming fall. And yeah, just thank you, everyone.
And where'd you graduate from?
Oh, San Marcos High School.
All right, go Knights. Congratulations. All right, I'm going to give you this, and then if you could come right up here, and we're going to take a quick picture of you.
Very impressive.
Where'd you go to college?
Bowdoin College.
No. Oh, Maine? Okay, well, you want to get more in the middle?
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, that's really impressive. All right, our next proclamation is going to be for the Pride Month, and that's Laura, Lisa, and Abby will be coming on down. Good to see you. Thank you so much for coming. Good to see you. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Okay, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Pride Month, whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and the city of San Marcos is a multicultural, diverse community comprised of residents, businesses, and visitors who come from all walks of life. And whereas Pride Month is a time to recall the trials of the LGBTQ community endured, to rejoice in the triumphs of trailblazers who bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality, and to celebrate the LGBTQ plus community's immeasurable culture, civic, and economic impact to our country. And whereas, since two thousand eight, the North County LGBTQ plus Resource Center and its Pride by the Beach Celebration have served, advocated for, and empowered thousands annually through counseling services, LGBTQ plus competency training to police, hospitals, and school districts, human trafficking prevention, services for homeless youth, families, veterans, and active-duty military support, and other valuable support and lifesaving services. And whereas, the city of San Marcos supports visibility, dignity, dignity, and equality for all by centering Pride Month as both a communal celebration and a personal celebration of self-worth and dignity. And whereas, the City Council of the City of San Marcos calls for embracing equal dignity and equal rights by eliminating prejudice and recognizes the resilience and determination of the many individuals fighting to live freely and authentically. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month includes awareness, support, advocacy, engaging in dialogue, strengthening alliances, building acceptance, and advancing equal rights. Now, therefore, we, the city of San Marcos, California, do hereby proclaim the month of June two thousand twenty-three as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ plus community. Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. All right. Oh, absolutely, sure.
I, I, I wanted to take a moment. My name is Lisa Navas. She heard pronouns. I am the Director of Operations for the North County LGBTQ Resource Center. We serve thirteen cities in North County, and we are so happy and proud of this council tonight. This symbolic gesture in the context of where we are in the world today is not just a symbol. It sends a message to your employees, to your students, to the people and citizens of San Marcos, that the city cares about them. So, this is no small act, and we really accept this proclamation with our full hearts and our full gratitude for the city of San Marcos, and the Honorable Mayor Jones, and the distinguished council here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you have the most beautiful Pride proclamation, by the way.
Oh, thank you. Well, that's Phil.
That's my staff.
Put that together.
We have this on our wall in the center, and it is the most beautiful one.
One, two, three. Two, three. One, two, three. So.
Great. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oops, sorry.
I thought there was one more.
That's it?
That's it? I thought there was one more.
So.
Sorry, we did have one more on the agenda, but they're coming the next meeting. They had to cancel at the last minute. Okay, moving on to, I'm sure everyone's seated, moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
Move to approve?
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And he knows? Nope. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our first, oh, oral communications. Do we have any speakers this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we are going to conduct our first public hearing, which is item number twelve, so we're going a little bit out of our normal order. And so, this is the time and place fix for the public hearing related to the proposed annexation and levy of assessments within the Discovery Meadows Development and Landscape and Lighting District Number One, Zone C, L L M D, Number One, to fund ongoing maintenance and servicing of landscape improvements in the Discovery Meadows community, and said public hearing is now open. I would like to ask the city clerk to report on the notice of this public hearing, and by the way, this is item number twelve that we are seeing before item number eleven, just for clarification. So, city clerk, do you have any?
Yeah, notice of the public hearing and distribution of the assessment ballots has been completed in the manner and form as required by law.
Okay, before proceeding further with the public hearing, I'd like to ask the city's legal counsel to provide a summary of the proceedings that will take place both during and after the close of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. During the public hearing, the city council will consider all objections or protests to the proposed assessments. However, the city council may only consider valid ballots submitted prior to the close of the public hearing to determine whether a majority protest exists. Majority protest exists if at the conclusion of the public hearing, the ballots timely submitted and not withdrawn opposing the assessments exceed the ballots submitted in favor of the assessment. The ballots timely submitted must be weighted according to their proportional financial obligation to, of each affected property for which a ballot was timely submitted. The public hearing may be continued from time to time. The city council may also continue the tabulation of the ballots to a different time and location accessible to the public, provided that it announces the time and location of the continued tabulation at the public hearing. If there is no majority protest, the city council may adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the annexation and levy of the annual assessments of L L M D, Number One. If there is a majority protest, the city council must abandon the proceedings, and the annexation and levy of the, of the annual assessments for L L M D, Number One, are prohibited at this time.
The city council will now hear any interested person who desires to address the city council on this matter. City clerk, do we have any speakers? No. Okay, seeing no one else, or there's anyone that wishes to speak? Oh. Maybe I spoke too soon?
Nope.
Nope, okay, just seeing that no one wishes to speak this evening, do any council members of the city council have any further questions, or any questions for staff, or attorney, or anything like that this evening? Seeing none? I would like to remind everyone that all assessment ballots and replacement assessment ballots must be received by the city clerk before the public hearing is closed. Any assessment ballots received after the close of the public hearing will not be able to be tabulated. Are there any owners who have not submitted their assessment ballots and need additional time to submit their ballots, or owners that have submitted their ballots but now wish to submit a replacement ballot? If so, the city council will take.
He had his hand up.
Okay.
There was a hand.
Yeah, I, on my ballot, I put.
Oh, could you please, sorry, could you please come down to the podium so we can hear you?
Yelling from the audience.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, on my ballot, I put opposed, I didn't put an X. Do I need to redo my ballot?
Uh, Mr. Scully? No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. The city council, okay, no, so, sorry, I'm just trying to follow along here. If there are no owners who need additional time, or after the city council meeting is now going, moving on after our last speaker, the public hearing will now be closed, and any assessment ballots received by the city clerk after this time shall not be tabulated. We got that clarification for you. I will now ask the city's legal counsel to address the next steps in this annexation process.
Perfect. Before we move on, just wanted to just double check, there is no speakers, and then nobody else wishes to speak prior to we closing the public hearing? Just wanted to ask one more time for the record. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so the city council will hold one additional meeting following this meeting to allow time for the protest ballot tabulation. While the protest ballot tabulation may be completed this evening, the city council will hold a final meeting formally announcing the results on June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. If the tabulation cannot be completed at this evening's meeting, the time and location, which will be accessible to the public, must be announced at this evening. At the June twenty-seventh meeting, the city council will consider adoption of the final resolution of this annexation proceeding, which declares the results of the property and protest proceeding held this evening. Staff will continue to work with the city's assessment engineering consultant and legal counsel to facilitate the subsequent meeting and actions required as part of the annexation proceeding. At this time, the assessment ballot tabulation will begin in the room adjacent to this council chambers, and will be open to the accessible, will be open and accessible to any member of the public wishing to view the tabulation. Once completed, the council will announce the tabulation has been concluded, or alternatively, the council will announce the time and location the tabulation will continue, a location that will, that will also be open and accessible to any members of the public wishing to view the tabulation. Mayor, the city council may continue on with the next-gen item while the tabulation continues.
Okay, and I'll be closing the public hearing after we come back from the tabulating the votes, correct?
So, the, the public hearing is already closed, so we'll move on to the tabulation at this point.
Okay, just double checking, want to make sure everyone in the, yeah, it's understanding. Okay, we'll be moving on to item number eleven, which is new business, Resolution two thousand twenty-three ninety-one forty-seven, adopting the operations and maintenance budget of the city of San Marcos for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three, and the capital improvement program budget for the five fiscal years ending twenty-seven through twenty-eight, and appropriating money out of the treasury for budgetary purposes. And Resolution two thousand twenty-three ninety-one forty-eight, authorizing appropriation and transfer funds for the establishment of an appropriated reserve for future expenditures and/or contingencies for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And I did want to have our members of our Budget Review Committee to please stand if you are here this evening, and thank you very much for your service. I know that we had one of our, one of you could not come to the meeting this evening. Jim Garcia, he had a family emergency, so he wasn't able to make it, but I want to definitely say thank you so much for your service here this evening, and you'll have time to speak if you'd like, but I just wanted to recognize you, and I'd like to give you a hand. It's a hard job, but we appreciate your showing up to the meetings, really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, do we have a staff report, then?
So, we do, it's a budget, so we do have a staff report. So, I thought we would start, and we would have the BRC members come up and, and start us off with, with the conversation, and then we'll, the staff will pick it up from there.
Great. Well, now that you've got your, your clapping over, if you want to go ahead and give us a, a report, that'd be great. Want to make sure we recognize you properly.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor Jones, city council members and staff. I'm here tonight as Chair of the Budget Review Committee to introduce the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, operating and capital improvement projects budget for your approval. The two thousand twenty-three Budget Review Committee consists of myself and six other members of the public that have graciously given their time to attend several in-person meetings over the span of five months. Additionally, these individuals contributed ideas, discussions, and recommendations to the Finance Director, City Manager, and staff to ensure a balanced budget proposal is submitted for the city of San Marcos. I would like to thank my fellow Budget Review Committee members. These members include Kathleen Smith, who is here, Vice Chair, Glenn Nguyen, Chris Freeman, Salvador Roman, Jim Garcia, and James Knowlton. And now, on to the stars of the show. Not yet, but almost, we'll be speaking in a few moments. I know the Budget Review Committee would like to thank the entire staff for their leadership, dedication, patience, and professionalism. Jack, Michelle, Helen, Phil, Lisa, Donna, Janet, and Morgan, we appreciate the time you took to answer our questions, provide background on unfamiliar city regulations and laws, as well as preparation for our monthly meeting presentations. And finally, one of the most important details, at least for me, is that the staff always made me feel welcome and valued. Although there were challenges with the current budget due to the elimination of COVID funds, Jack and Lisa eased fears by providing solutions for the possible city's financial shortcomings and provided ideas for next year's budget two thousand twenty-four. We recognize and appreciate the city staff for being able to quickly adjust to changes in revenue while not eliminating any staff currently working. And with that, I would like to officially report that the Budget Review Committee unanimously approves the staff's recommendations for the budget that will be presented to you tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Council, again, for the opportunity to serve as the Budget Review Committee Chair, although I did not choose this, they nominated me, and I'll let city staff take over from here.
We call that vol and told here in the city. Thank you very much for the presentation. Okay?
So, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So, I'm going to turn it over, we have Donna Aparr, Assistant Director of Finance, is going to handle the operational part of the budget, and then Isaac Etchimenez, the City Development Services Director, is going to handle the capital portion of the budget. Before I, I turn it over to Donna, I just want to sort of reiterate, this was a more challenging budget situation for us, and I think for every city, as, as we all come back to normal, both in terms of operations and in terms of funding, that there was a lot of money in the last three years that had washed through the system, that came from various levels of government to help cities and everybody else get through the pandemic, and all that money is now not part of the process anymore. So, as, as we've talked about in the budget workshop in March, our revenues have reset at a lower level than they were pre-pandemic in terms of where their growth would be, and so I think that the budget we presented you is, is not the budget we would ideally present you, but we think it's a really strong budget, and it reflects a good mode forward for how we deal with closing the gap between where we are revenue-wise post-pandemic and where expenditures have been. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Donna to walk you through the operational portion of the budget.
Thank you, Jack. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be covering the operation and maintenance budget for the general fund. We'll discuss an overview of the upcoming fiscal year and its revenues and expenditures. We'll also touch on the infrastructure replacement and rehabilitation funds, as well as general fund reserves, and then we'll talk briefly about considerations for future planning. Then Isaac will be covering the capital improvement program budget. For the upcoming fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we're seeing that some of our major revenue sources are beginning to return to pre-pandemic trajectory, with sales tax projections at three percent above fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget, property tax at eight percent above, and charges for services at twelve percent above. On the expense side, we are recommending a modest increase of just about one percent over the fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget. Though some of our major revenue sources are anticipated to increase and return to pre-pandemic trajectory, overall revenue is projected to decrease by about three percent. This is mainly due to the end of American Rescue Plan Act funds ending, which are one-time revenues. There's also about a thirty-six percent decrease in rental income due to projects and tenant improvement obligations, not necessarily the income itself. Nonetheless, without the one-time ARPA in fiscal year twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-four revenue estimate of eighty-six point seven million would actually be a four percent increase over the fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget, which indicates the awaited return to pre-pandemic trajectory. This pie chart shows our general fund revenue projections of eighty-six point seven million, with property tax and sales tax at over half of the total, followed by charges for services. For the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four expenditures are normal annual increases for sheriff contract costs, which is a one percent increase for fiscal year twenty-four, employee benefits and contracts, regular PERS costs, normal unfunded accrued liability payment to CalPERS, and increase in fuel costs total about two point nine million. While regular revenue dipped during the pandemic and is now coming back up, expenses never took a dip, and costs of normal operations only continue to rise. So, despite department reorganizations and restructuring, all departments decreasing operating expenses, and no additional infrastructure funds transfers in fiscal year twenty-four, there is a projected deficit of about three point eight million. This pie chart depicts the general fund operating expenditures of ninety point five million by function. As shown, fire services and law enforcement together are about fifty percent of the total, followed by general government, which includes seven departments, then public works, development services, parks and recreation, and then other financing uses. For the three replacement and rehabilitation funds, proposed programming of funds for next fiscal year includes vehicle replacement for fire and public works operations, as well as a scheduled EMS ambulance re-chassis. There is also a public works skylight retrofit, sewer line repair, and LED conversion for parks, and playground replacements. This table reflects the projected balances of our three replacement and rehabilitation funds. With a beginning total of eight point seven million for all three funds, and the proposed fiscal year twenty-four projects mentioned in the previous slide, as well as existing capital improvement program appropriations, the projected remaining total balance would be about two point four million available for future programming by the council. This next table demonstrates our general fund reserve balances. Per council policy, a minimum of forty percent of unassigned liquid reserves is maintained across three reserve categories. The approved fiscal year twenty-three budget reflects as such. After factoring in non-liquid reserves, the middle prospective fiscal year twenty-four column illustrates unassigned liquid reserves of forty-one million, which is at forty-five percent of ninety point five million. unassigned liquid reserves of $41 million, which is at 45% of $90.5 million recommended expenditure budget. As this percent is well above the 40% minimum, the proposed fiscal year 24 column shows the use of reserves for balancing the budget gap of $3.8 million, while still meeting the required liquid reserve minimum at 41%, which equates to $37.2 million in liquid Some items to consider for future planning resulting from post-pandemic performance indicators are, on the revenue side, long-term growth of sales tax and property tax are expected to be consistent with pre-pandemic growth, so we're really excited about that. However, during this inflationary post-pandemic market, expenditures are assumed to grow by at least 3%. Additionally, some items to begin to factor in are the operating costs of a possible future fire station number five at Rancho Tesoro Park. To assist with future planning, this table demonstrates a seven-year budget trajectory. Under the assumption of revenue growth at 4%, which is consistent with a fiscal year 24 over fiscal year 23 growth without ARPA, and expenditure growth at 3%, the gap would almost diminish during fiscal year 27-28. With a new fire station and park facilities factored in, the gap widens again in fiscal year 28-29. And Jack may want to elaborate on this a little bit more.
So the tricky part about long-term finance forecasting is you know you're going to be wrong, right? You can only be as accurate as you can be. The blue line being in the expenditure line, it assumes 3% of growth of expenditures, which is actually less than what the pre-pandemic rate was. We were both 4% on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, so it does take into account a lower growth of expenditures. We won't be able to mirror the 1.3% that we're proposing for this year for a couple of reasons. It's probably not sustainable long-term from a staff perspective, because that 1.3% assumes quite a few vacant positions stay that way, positions that might become vacant stay vacant for some amount of time, and so it does assume a fair amount of salary savings through the course of the year of positions known vacant, and then there's always some turnover in any organization keeping some vacant. The other thing we know in future years is that we're on the second year of a five-year sheriff's contract. Year one and year two were 1% increases, which were fantastically beneficial to have such a small increase at this more difficult time, but that increase ramps up to 3.5% each of the next three years. That's our largest single item in the budget, so it's going to be hard to keep expenditures at 1% growth, while that one item is obviously growing at a higher rate. 3.5% is still well below the historical contracts the cities have had with the sheriff. The contract we just came off of was a five-year deal, ended in 2021, started at 6% per year and ratcheted down to 4.5%. So this contract is still very favorable from a cost perspective, and I think any city with a police department would be pretty happy to only see their law enforcement costs increase 3 or 3.5%. So we have our work cut out for us moving forward to bring that red line and that blue line together, and that'll be our goal moving forward. We don't want to bring budgets to you that use reserves. We did do some things in the fiscal year we're in right now to reduce expenditures, which is what brought, helped bring that reserve year-end up to 45%. That's good, I think that's good fiscal management, when you know you're in a little bit of a problem, is to ratchet down where you can. I think that we are going to reach a point where there's going to be some service level reductions if we don't get the revenue side of it back even with the expenditure side, and we all want to avoid that. But we have some ideas. I think as soon as the council adopts a budget for next year, we'll get to work on those ideas and see what can be done to get a little bit more efficient and find some ways to grow revenues if we can. I think you've heard me talk at workshops before, California is not a kind of a state that allows local governments a lot of control of their revenues. You don't get to change the property tax rate. I come from Pennsylvania, they change the property tax every year. You don't get to do that out in California here. Sales tax is something that you don't get to do without a vote of the public, so tax increases or new imposition of fees or things are not easy to do, you just can't decide to do them, you obviously have to get the support of the voters to do that, and so it just makes it more difficult to do. So the city's destinies, from a revenue perspective, are not really entirely within their control in the way California is set up. So we do have to work on the expenditure side and see if we can find some more savings, and obviously we'll look to see where some revenue bumps could exist. I would say one of the challenges, and for those of you who've been on the council for a long time, you know that the rent revenue is not nearly what it was before. That's not because we're charging less rent, it's because there have been changes over the past, I would say, five to six years within the state government, within state law, that have driven our costs as a property owner, as a landlord, up in terms of doing tenant improvements, just maintenance kind of projects on those revenue-generating buildings. And so it's not that our rent has gone down, but our net profits have gone down. That is also something that we need to figure out long-term if we want to try and make that revenue source to be as advantageous to the city as it's been in the past. I think that's a little bit more of a challenge, and we've engaged some assistance from other agencies and entities who are in the same boat, to try to figure out a way if there's a business model that's, that works better for us in terms of maximizing the profit potential of the revenue-generating properties we have. And when I say that, I'm predominantly talking about Creekside Marketplace and Civic Center. And, you know, Civic Center is the more difficult of the two from a market perspective, because I think everybody knows the office market's very soft. And so even if you're kind of fully occupied, your office rents are not what they were pre-pandemic, because there's just not as much demand for office space as there used to be. But anyway, so those are the challenges that are in front of us going forward. I think we're in a good place to do it. I think that the city having 40% in reserve coming out of the pandemic is something most cities would really be happy to be at, and I think that this budget, while it doesn't get us exactly where we want to be, starts to close that gap between that red and that blue line, and that's really what's most important for us, I think, going forward.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Of Jack? No?
I do.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
They get away with no questions on that.
I know. So I want to compliment staff and actually council too, because we did have many millions of dollars come in over the past few years, and we chose, staff chose, we chose, we're all one team. We chose to be careful and not spend that money in a crazy way, to use one-time money for ongoing costs, to create a lot of positions, because we wouldn't have the long-term revenue to keep them going. So first, a compliment for that, I think that was important. Then the other, I guess this is more a question now, or comment than a question, but I like the fact on that one chart, I don't like the fact that there's a point in time when the expenditures exceed the revenue, but at least it's out into '27-28, and so we have some time to fix that. I think it's, I think this is the first time we've ever, I believe, used, had to use our excess reserves to balance the budget, and so I'm all in favor of addressing it early and not having multiple years of having a situation like that. And hopefully, by the time we get there, we'll have a plan, and we won't be crossing that excess.
So, if you don't mind, there wasn't really a question on the first part, but I did want to raise, I think it's helpful for people maybe just to understand it or watching or hear. The city got $18 million of ARPA money, American Rescue Plan Act funds, and we required to have them spent by the end of 2024. We were limited, the law limited cities to using those funds for lost revenues up to $10 million. So we did, we took the $10 million of the 18 and used it for lost revenues. Our calculations recovered about half of what we lost through the course of the pandemic. So that's part of what this is about, is, and in particular, I think that plays into the infrastructure funds. We haven't been able to fund the infrastructure funds because the hit we took, you know, when you consider both on the tax revenue front, on the sales tax front, where every city struggled, right, through the pandemic, when stores were closed for a long time and what have you, us being a commercial landlord was a whole other dynamic that most cities don't deal with. And so what we did in terms of making agreements with our tenants to try and keep them afloat while they weren't getting business drastically impacted our revenues through that too. And so, but we also then used the rest of that money for very, you know, nonprofit grant program, Boys and Girls Club, Business Sustainability Loan Program. So we used those funds for really community-building purposes, not our own as a city per se, but as a community. So, and I think that, you know, as we, as we deal with a budget that's a little bit out of whack, we sort of have to remember what happened in the last three years and what we were limited by. And I know I've done this in press budgets, but we also asked our staffs to take a pretty big hit in 2020, with no promise or guarantee from a compensation perspective that they might see that. They eventually did, because ARPA came along, but when our staff all stepped up and said, "Yeah, we'll take back some compensation right now," we couldn't promise them we could make it up to them, and we were able to make it up to them when the ARPA money came in. So a lot of things have happened in the last few years, and I think that we've approached the budget as this is, this is a new year zero, and we're starting again, because now we're back to just where we were in terms of a normal business operation. And we'll, and we'll make all this stuff get fixed as we go along.
Question, wasn't there a second, we had the 18 million from ARPA, wasn't there a second funding of?
There was the CARES Act money that came in, that's actually what we used to reimburse the staff concessions, we didn't use the ARPA money for that.
And how much was that care, roughly?
That was a couple million dollars.
Oh, not a lot.
Yeah, that wasn't nearly as much.
Okay. Okay.
And that had to be used for specific COVID-related things, whereas the ARPA money had some other flexibility things, still COVID-related, but it was more flexible.
Okay, Councilmember Snella.
Yeah, not a question, just a statement. First off, I appreciate everything that our Budget Review Committee worked on with regards to this, and of course, everything that, that staff did to really analyze the needs to have versus the wants to have, and kind of help us close that gap. And I, I understand there's still, we're not out of the woods, there's still challenging times, but I really appreciate that you brought up the new fire station and Rancho Tesoro Park, because parks and rec and public safety have always been top priority for the city. And even though we know we have some challenging times, the fact that you mentioned it in your presentation means that you're still laser-focused on those types of things, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So we have the capital part.
I know, I know. Before we go to that, though, anything about our regular, okay. All right, Isaac, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm pleased to present the fiscal year 23-24 capital improvement program budget. The capital improvement program is a five-year plan that includes projects planned to be funded, planned, and/or constructed over the span of the program. This year, the budget includes 46 projects encompassing a variety of things, such as the Creek Project, which you're very familiar with, street improvement projects, storm drain projects, and facility improvements. This year, the program proposes to appropriate $5.7 million. The total program budget is proposed at $238 million, with 114 of that being attributed to the Creek Project. This pie chart shows that the 238 program budget breaks down, with the majority of the projects falling into the Creek District, seen on the right-hand side there, and the remainder of the majority being in streets, with components around 2% to 3% as shown for planning, parks, facilities, and storm drains, as well as a traffic component. So some key completed projects that we had over the past fiscal year included several items, such as our exterior metal, metal painting project, some park projects where we replaced synthetic turf. It also included facility projects here at the Civic Center, as well as some work over at the Community Center. It also included a planning project for our local roadway safety plan, and of course, our ongoing slurry seal program. Getting into some key active projects that will be going on during the next fiscal year include, of course, the Creek Project, which is nearing its final components being installed, and Jack will be giving an update on that later in the agenda. We also have items such as the general plan, the Fire Station 3 upgrades, which include a $2 million state grant. We have the surface seals, which are budgeted at approximately $2 million a year. The Woodland Interchange Project, which is a cooperative project with Caltrans, at approximately $17.5 million. The South Santa Fe and Smilax Project, which is an intersection realignment project, at $3 million. Olive Street Bridge Replacement, which is a project to replace a timber bridge on Olive Street near Sycamore, as it nears the end of its useful life, at $2.5 million. Rancho Coronado Park Improvements at $1.8 million. The Bradley Park Pump Track at approximately $1 million. The Adaptive Traffic Project that we're looking into and studying over on Norrell Road at approximately $1.5 million. The Traffic Management Center upgrades at $2.75 million. And the backplate project at approximately $3.25 of a million. Some new projects we've added to the program include a curb gutter sidewalk program, which will take effect in fiscal year '27 and run through fiscal year '30. The goal of this project is to start replacing and installing curb gutter sidewalk where needed. We've also included the EV Grant Program, originally programmed in the operational budget, has been moved to the capital program in order to facilitate easier administration. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and if there are any questions, I'm here to address them.
I have a quick question. Isaac, on the curb gutter sidewalk fiscal year '27-30, are those places where we already have the curb gutter and sidewalk, or is it places that are maybe not yet improved because they're an older part of our community?
So the program can be used for both. Over the next several years, we're going to be putting together a process in which to evaluate areas where we have gaps in our system, as well as evaluating if there's any key critical areas that we need to replace, because they might pose some kind of liability to the city or need improvements.
And is that an ADA improvement, or, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along and find that number, how much we're planning on investing in that?
So we are currently planning, I believe, at $200,000, I want to say, per year, is what we're planning on putting in there to start with. However, we can look that up and get that to you. It will not be ADA. We are going to coordinate the ADA projects, which are usually funded with CDBG. So what we will be doing is coordinating our slurry seal projects, our ADA projects, and the curb gutter sidewalk program as a cohesive kind of triage of areas that need to be addressed, and, and looking into them and evaluating each one, and making sure we get ahead of it with each project.
Okay, because I see, like, for instance, on, actually, page 16, sorry, of our, of our budget, the actual budget, it's saying that we have $10 million for the annual surface seal, and then the ADA improvements at $4.8 million? And that's not a yearly number, that is, correct?
That's the five.
Yeah, the five-year, that's what I was double-checking. And so this is outside of that, that you're talking about, the $200,000 per year, perfect.
This is an addition.
Got it, okay. That's what I was trying to get to. Okay, any other questions of staff? No?
I have some.
Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor, I hadn't, I was trying to get, I was trying to get, no, I hadn't gone that way yet.
I was waiting to see if they did.
I was trying to see if I could make eye contact with them.
A couple clarifications. The Woodland Park Interchange, that is just helping plan for it with no construction, correct?
That is correct. Currently, it's a cooperative agreement with Caltrans, who is taking the lead on the project.
Right, but we're, we're helping.
That is correct.
I just want to confirm that. The Smilax Interchange, so that has been an ongoing issue out there for, I want to say, when did, I'm not sure when they tore down that building, maybe, I don't know, five or 10 years ago or something? Does that actually get finished in this coming fiscal year? I didn't look to see when it's.
So the, the budget currently shows the South Santa Fe at Smilax intersection realignment occurring in 2024.
Okay.
We have had to push that back. We've been ready to build it for some time, and we've been waiting on work orders from SDG&E.
Oh, let's not even get started with that.
Oh, I'm just curious, how long have we been waiting on SDG&E?
Approximately three years.
Okay. Okay, well, hopefully, we don't wait that long, finish. Well, hopefully we don't wait that long to finish the bridge. Sorry. And then, can you clarify for me, where is Rancho Coronado Park?
Also Rancho Tesoro and it's currently, these are placeholder names, it's not currently named, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
And so what, that project that I just told you about, that's the interim project where we're doing a couple of fields.
Yes.
And then the, the full build out of the park and doing the master plan, that's still to come. And that's part of that five years out cost increase. That assumes the, the full build out of a park at some point because that's about a 24 acre site, I think, something like that.
Right, okay, okay.
And I don't readily see the, the grass portion, when is that going to be?
A challenging contractor, so leave it at that.
Oh, great. Our good news, okay. Deputy Mayor, did you?
That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, well, do we have then anyone that is interested in making, making a motion to approve?
Move to approve and adopt.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? No, motion passes unanimously. Again, I just want to, and I know it's already been stated, but thank you to our Budget Review Committee. We know it's a lot of work, a lot of things to look at. And this is definitely more of a tough time than it has been in the past. And so we definitely appreciate all of your detail and, you know, watching it. And then, you know, also our staff, a lot of hard work went into preparing the budget. Also, you know, pairing down all of our wish lists. You know, it's like Christmas and you get that Sears catalog when you're a kid. Now I'm really dating myself. And then you go, oh shoot, I don't get to get all the things that I want. Well, we really appreciate all, all of staff's work in this as well. So thanks again for all of that. And, you know, we appreciate all of you and really just coming together and really looking out for our citizens and doing all that we can to keep them, you know, served in the way that we want them to be served. Any other comments from City Council? Nope? Okay, all right, I guess we're moving on then. So item number, we're not going back to.
Madam Mayor, real quickly, I just want to report out from the, the previous public hearing that the, the ballots have been tabulated and the results will be recorded and provided at the June 27th City Council Meeting.
Perfect, that's what I was thinking was going to happen, okay. So we're not going back to item number 12 for the rest of the evening. We'll be back on the 23rd for that. And moving on to item number 13, which is also a public hearing. That's Resolution 20239149, amending the city's 2023 Regional Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal years 23 through 27, also known as the RTIP. And I believe we probably have a staff report on this?
Very briefly, this is an item required to do every year. The RTIP is required to be consistent with the city's adopted Capital Improvement Program Budget, which you just adopted. So this brings the RTIP in consistency with that. And so we can submit it to Sandag on time.
Okay, well, I would move to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Nope. Okay, and I would move to approve that to be consistent with the Capital Improvement Project that we just approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Okay, seeing none, we are moving on. To public, I'm sorry, to oral communications, do we have any?
No, Madam Mayor.
No speaker slips? Okay. I had put my Sandag agenda in here, so it kind of confused me what I was looking at next. So moving on to reports, we had a Sandag Board of Directors meeting last Friday. We also had a, an executive committee meeting prior to that. The main takeaway is truly honestly what's coming up, moving forward in our agenda coming up on June 23rd, which is going to be the public hearing to start the public process of removing the road user charge in the 2021 Plan. Though the 2025 Plan is actually where it will be implemented, but we are going to nevertheless remove it from the 2021 Plan. So we are moving forward to start that process with the environmental out for review on June 23rd. Then on the July 14th Agenda, we will be then discussing the funding of the 2025 Regional Plan Update, which is actually the 21 Plan. I know it's very complicated, but it is the, the next iteration of that where we will actually be talking about the funding. The road user charge will still be in there unless we make a motion or a direction to remove that from the 2025 Update as well as a about 200, I'm sorry, 800 miles of local roads and highways to be converted into toll roads. So that is what I brought up at the Executive Committee Meeting and then it was also on the agenda for the Board of Directors Meeting. The other issue was the Transnet Proposed 2023 Bond Issuance, the refunding and the termination of fixed taxpayer and budget swaps. That was the next thing that we did. So theoretically, we are planning on saving some money on the Transnet Program. Transnet is something that the voters passed and there was a couple of iterations, the last one being in 2006, I think it was, 2006. That was where we voted to impose a half cent sales tax on ourselves. And so during that discussion of that, I asked the attorney, there was one thing that I didn't agree with. We ended up changing it there at the dais and that was the Board of Directors making a legal opinion, which I didn't think was appropriate. So we were able to change that. But the part that I think is remarkable coming forward, talking about this in the future is that the, any monies that we are able to save, the allocation of those could be changed by the Board of Directors, not as to what the actual voters voted for, which I am adamantly opposed to. So that discussion will be coming at a later date, but I wanted to alert folks out in the audience and then also at home that that will be coming forward. And our attorney at Sandag was indicating that he felt that it would be based on the new voting structure of the Board of Directors currently and not the Board of Directors voting structure as it was back when that passed. So some of the board members are not really thinking that that sounds right. So anyway, I ask that we have an outside legal opinion on that. So I'll be pushing for that as we continue to discuss it. I don't think I missed anything. And that was all she wrote on that last meeting. Our next meeting is on the 23rd, as I mentioned. That will be moving forward on the removal of the 2021 Transportation Plan to remove the road user charge. The invite, well, actually to put it out for a public review of the environmental part of it. So anyway, that was it. And then moving on to item number 15, which is the League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet July 10th, Mayor.
Okay, North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
We meet next week.
Okay, North County Dispatch Joint Powers 30, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a meeting in May, so we met May 24th was our last meeting. And I do want to go over a couple of the highlights of the, of the meeting. So very exciting, it was the first time that I get to see the recognitions of some of these really highly qualified employees. So that was exciting. So we did recognize a 15 years of service individual by the name of Lead Sean Fairchild. So 15 years, so a long, a long time. We had another individual by the name of Dispatcher Brittany Pereira, 10 years of service. And then we had Fire Communication Supervisor Todd Ripa, five years of service. And then we also did have four individuals that were recognized for their, for their outstanding service and their actions during, of course, emergency lifesaving situations. So we recognized Brianna Singh, Melinda Fairchild, Federico Bejar and Peyton Murphy. And I'm just so impressed how these individuals can stay so poised and under pressure. So that was really interesting to hear the, the details about their, their experiences.
Did you hear the call? Or did you recognize them and not hear the call?
No, you know what, they did, they did share part of the call, yeah. And it's so impressive that they're able to, to stand their pressure. So that was nice, too, to see that. And we did also approve our 2023, 2024 Budget. And one of the highlights is that because it sounds like this is something that has been talked about as, as a benefit to these employees. They finally did implement a mental health component aspect to it. And so we were glad to see that that's been incorporated. So it sounds like now as an employer of staff exposed to, right, the repeated trauma associated with answering 911 calls, we are taking steps, right, to do our part by providing all staff with the opportunity for up to five sessions with counselors trained to interact with the public safety professionals as part of our Wellness and Resiliency Program. So I think that had been in the works for some time. So we were glad to see that, that that's now incorporated into some of the benefits.
Well, I think that's great because, you know, a lot of times, you know, much like our, our firefighters and paramedics and our law enforcement, too, I mean, a lot of times they're in very traumatic situations. And that's really important for them to get all of the help that they need because, you know, we, we want them to be able to cope with all the things and they need to talk about it sometimes.
Absolutely.
Glad to hear that. You were talking about the budget, what's our cost per call now, do you know?
Let me see if I can find that information. So this, the current budget this year, we were at 5,983,842. Our proposed budget this year, we're at 6,423,878. And if you'll recall, Escondido is supposed to be coming in. So that's still in the works. We're being told that it's moving along. So as I understand, that should help set some of, some of the costs that, that we have. I'll look to see if I can find that per, per call cost and I could report back. I do want to announce then that our next meeting will be August 10th of this year. And then also the Chiefs, I'm sorry, the Chiefs Meetings is happening August 10th. Our regular board meeting will be August 23rd.
Okay, and then, and then if you could also find out how many calls we are tracking per year. And I would imagine if Escondido, well, when Escondido's on board, I imagine that they would need to add some more positions as well.
That's correct. There will be some additional positions. What we're being told is that Escondido should be paying for, for the added positions and the costs.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. We have just some administrative issues. We approved Employee Handbook, Drug and Alcohol Policy for our employees and a Benefits Package. And on the operational side, Jubilant won San Marcos and they're, they're working in San Marcos and Escondido, but I'll limit my remarks to San Marcos. They're, they've applied for and received some funds out of a $700 million grant. And they're going to partner with Jubilant to provide a 20% match on the funds. And essentially what they're going to do is put in EV stations at 2115 Montiel Road. So for reference, that is the greater center where the Plasma Center is, Turner Outdoors. And what they're going to provide are 20 Level 3 EV chargers, 10 Level 2 EV chargers, a dedicated outlet to charge electric wheelchairs and related equipment, two air compressors to fill tires, two vacuums for car interiors, an outdoor bike, e-bike repair station, bike, e-bike and electric scooter rentals, two food trucks and farmer's style, and farmers market style pop-ups for hot food, produce stands and a pop-up stage and audience area. These are things that will be available in that area. But the big thing is the budget will be 6.5 million with 5.2 in grant funds and 1.3 matching funds from Jubilant. So it doesn't cost the city a dime, it brings more EV charging stations within our jurisdiction and Escondido will also be benefiting.
Is the dialysis center still in that, in that center?
Yes, it's all the, that greater center, yes.
Okay, because I would imagine people stay, stay there for quite a while as they're receiving treatment.
And it's, one of the reasons they were able to secure the grant is because that particular area, when they, when they draw the radius, it's, it's within the disadvantaged residence area. So even though it's in a commercial lot, the residence across the street.
Yeah, with close proximity. You've got the condominiums right down the street, too.
That's correct.
Apartments. There's actually, I think, a couple of senior living facilities over there as well.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to City Council Business Visits. Councilmember Nunez and I went to one yesterday. It was called My Breast Friend. And one of our employees was with us, well, actually, we had two employees with us. One has a young toddler, so she knew all about this business. And then the other one is going to have a child soon. And so they were really excited about this business visit, as, as were Councilmember Nunez and I. This is something that just recently came to San Marcos, but the company started, believe it or not. Okay, so it's called My Breast Friend and it is nursing pillows. So back when I had kids, yep, there's a picture of them. They have the original, the deluxe, the super deluxe and then the twin and plus pillow. So if you've got more than one child, I mean, how do you, how do you nurse them at the same time? You just really can't. And so we actually have a picture of, of those, too. But anyway, it was started by Andrew, yep, see, the, the babies are indicative of where the babies like could lie and there we are showing the, Councilmember Nunez. I was like, come on, we've got to at least show people what they look like because you can't really tell if you're just looking at, you know, this, you know, just sitting there in the box. So anyway, it was a business started by a man, believe it or not, Andrew Zenoff in 1998, before he actually had kids. In fact, I believe he was in his twenties. But it's a very popular nursing pillow option with unique design features. And by the way, you could see it, there's a little Velcro sort of thing on the side where you can put your cell phone, so you don't have to be bored the whole time because sometimes you get tired when you're nursing your kids. So anyway, it was founded by a bachelor, which is very funny. But the idea came from him observing friends using various household items, you know, the pillows and whatever you can find to assist with nursing. And then also, and then also the muscle fatigue, back pain, discomfort. And it actually, you can't see that part in this picture, but it goes around the back of you and it has a quiet strap that has a quiet little clip so that when you are trying to make getaway, if you're trying to get your baby into bed, you can clip it and it won't make a loud noise where they wake up because that's oftentimes a problem. But anyway, so he, he had a business degree and he had a desire to help others. So he began interviewing women and designing prototypes to solve this common issue with new moms. I think a close family friend had something going on and so he decided to, see, and you can see the back part of it in, in those pictures. But anyway, after a lengthy cycle of design and testing, he designed over 50 prototypes in one year. It's a lot. Anyway, the company has three different pillow types as well as nursing tools and creams. And they also have the option, which is one that I had, which is that gray one on the end, which is for, for two babies at one time. And Councilmember Nunez, did you want to? Talk about the rest of it?
Yes.
And why they came to San Marcos? Because I think that's an important part of all this.
Absolutely. So I had no idea that this product existed, that this company existed, but here they are in, in San Marcos. So they moved to San Marcos about a year ago. And it, we were told that Andrew has been involved in many different ventures. But during the pandemic, he decided that he wanted to focus on this particular business. And so he made the decision to move to San Diego County. And they set up in our backyard in San Marcos. So they've been here for about a year and they're looking to grow. And it was very interesting that they do all of their manufacturing in China, but they do distribute out of San Marcos. So I think we had a, we're in our warehouse. So that was interesting. So I think we had a, we're in our warehouse, so that was interesting, that all the distribution is done from here. They
They came from San Al Enselmo.
Yes.
And remember the whole thing, he was like, oh, yeah, I came for the better weather, and I'm like, well, this, why'd you bring this with you? It's terrible weather right now. So anyway, we were kind of laughing about that, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, so they have three warehouse employees right now at San Marcos, and they have three to four remote employees still in the Bay Area, so. But they did say they are looking to grow, they're looking at their marketing to expand their market share, and the company's main direct-to-consumer avenue was through Buy Buy Baby. The change closure is changing the way My Breast Friend does business. They're currently strategizing to rework their e-commerce approach. And today, My Breast Friend's pretend design is considered the number-one choice by lactating consultants and supports mother in over 45 countries. It's used in hundreds of NICUs and birthing hospitals, and so the company's a great addition to San Marcos and adds to our emerging maternity and child product industry.
So for sure, they'll be having it, I would say, probably in the Level 2 NICU at our new hospital that's going to be opening up August 9, Kaiser Permanente. Anyway, yeah, our staff members that either had a baby or a young child or going to have a baby, were very excited, because this company is particularly popular, apparently, with, you know, I'm past that age, but I guess I could be a grandmother. So anyway, I do actually have a friend that's going to be having a baby, so I've got my next gift already lined up, what's going to happen. Oh, and they do everything now online, pretty much. They don't have any, you know, with the closure of Buy Buy Baby, that really has changed how they're looking at things. They do sell it on Amazon as well, but they also have their own website. If you just Google their name, you can find their website. Anyway, very interesting, and that's Andrew right there. He's now, you know, all this time later, anyway, really interesting fellow. He now has four kids, by the way. So he's, now he's, he's probably, that's why he went from just having the regular version to the deluxe version, so he's figured out all the little things that he could add to it. So anything else?
No, it's a great addition to our city.
Yes, okay. Moving on to the San Marcos Creek Project. Update, our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple items on the bridge, the approaches are being prepared for all the surface improvements. They're a little dependent upon the utility undergrounding, and we've, as I've let you all know, we've run into some issues with some likely delays related to San Diego gas and electric, so we're trying to get that resolved and move those things forward as fast as possible. That will probably push our, well, will definitely push our August ribbon-cutting date off. We're working on a date in the early fall for that, not necessarily the opening of things, but just the ribbon-cutting event, so we're trying to figure that piece out. The sound wall construction along Discovery continues, the habitat work continues, notably the channel underneath the bridge is now being put in its proper place, so the flow line of the creek will be where the flow line of the creek should be. And the park is continuing, doing the final grading for the play area, there's a small play area, and that's underway, and that'll help to get to the final piece of the trail. And we're building a couple later retention basins along the park area as well. So unfortunately, August doesn't look like the date anymore, but hopefully, it's not too far beyond that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, council commentary, tomorrow, Flag Day. So the Quanis Group is having at Walnut Grove Park their annual flag retirement at 6:30, and if you want, if you have an old flag, don't throw it away, bring it out there, that's the proper way of retiring a flag, is to actually have a constructive burning and send it off into the atmosphere, I guess. Anyway, we will have our fire department there, so to be safe, not to worry. Anyway, any other council commentary? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
Just a quick note to wish former San Marcos Fire, I believe he was a Fire Captain-Chief, and current Escondido Fire Chief Rick Vogt on his retirement in mid-July, dedicated a lot of years to the fire service all over the region, and we certainly wish him well in his retirement. Thank you.
Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.